Start off with doing a roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spoggettis.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship, absent. Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a court.
Thank you. Stand to pledge allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right. Last council meeting, you guys had the dream team. This one's the real team.
Dream team.
Glad I'm on both.
Watched that.
I did watch this. I feel like I haven't been up here for quite a while because I missed one, so. Exactly. And great job for filling in. Appreciate it.
You did, sir.
All right, so we have number five.
Minutes of the February 11th, 2019 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of February 11th, 2019.
Move to approve the executive session minutes?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Are there none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes. Item seven, updates. Couple items. We have the Antique Spectacular Vintage Market. The annual Spring Antique Spectacular will be March 1st to the 3rd, 2019, at the QCCA Expo Center, 2621 Second Avenue in Rock Island. The event will feature antique dealers with unique merchandise from around the world. Shop that timeless treasure. Admission is $8 and good for admission for all three days. Parking is free. For more information, visit www.antiquespectacular.com or call Kimberly Schilling at 712-324-9961. I know a few people their wives go there, but. Trivia Fun Friday. The Community Caring Conference is hosting a trivia night Friday, March 15th, at the Church of Peace Fellowship Hall at 1114 12th Street in Rock Island. Doors open at 6:00 PM and the game time will start at 7:00 PM. The cost is just $10 per person or $80 for a table of eight. For more information or to register, call CCC at 309-721-7849 or email rockislandccc@gmail.com. Tax preparation assistance. From now until April 13th, 2019, the Martin Luther King Jr. Center will be a site for free tax preparation assistance for qualifying individuals and families. Walk-ins are welcome. No appointment is necessary at this site. You can call 563-355-9900 for more information about eligibility and service provided. Also, we have a little notice from Junior Achievement. If those of you that are junior achievement, we have some, I know some city employees that get involved in junior achievement throughout there. But what it is, real quick, is helping give instructions to some of the kids. Give a little seminar update, whether it be on, more Chandler, economic development, whether it be on just balancing the checkbook, whether it be on different, I guess, just different topics with different grades. Fourth grades, first through sixth grade. But, I guess, all this being said, I'm stubborn around on this. They need volunteers to help teach. It's a real simple project. They give you all the information. If Chandler can do it, then, you know, anybody can.
They're specifically looking for volunteers for Rock Island schools.
That's correct. So we got, you know, whether it be Dacman, Earl Hansen, Eugene Field, Francis, all of the Rock Island schools are looking for volunteers, almost every grade. And so I guess I encourage those listening and those in the audience here, even council members. It really is a real fun process. I've visited a few of them. I'm on the board of Junior Achievement, and it's a great aspect, a great way to help get the kids involved and engaged. So please, if you don't, not you, pass the word to help Jay teach some classes. And that's it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes. If I could add on to that, since we had our last council meeting, our young girls, Rock Island High School Basketball Team, has done wonderful. They won the regional, they won the sectional, and in another nine minutes, they'll be playing the super sectional. And I've been asked, why am I sitting here? Okay? Part of that is, my daughter Mia started training these girls when she was playing college basketball. So she has had the input, and we would have been there. We were there last week. But hopefully, they will win tonight, and those games after that will be on television, and it will be at Redbird Arena, so I will be sitting here cheering them on, but I won't be noisy.
Yeah, there you go.
But our young ladies, the Rock Island Girls Basketball Team, have put Rock Island on the map.
Great accomplishment.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number eight.
Proclamation declaring the week of March 3rd through March 9th, 2019, as Women in Construction Week.
Very good. I believe there are several people here to receive this. Julia Meyer and Lyndon and Anita Hocker. But, so, read this here. The NAWIC Quad City Chapter Number 50 has distinguished itself for 56 years as the voice of women in construction in the Quad City area. And whereas, the work done by the NAWIC Quad Cities Number 50 has benefited Rock Island through community development and educational programs, and whereas, NAWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number 50 has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas, the construction community represented by NAWIC Quad City Chapter Number 50 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovations and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades careers, and the positive vision of the future. And whereas, NAWIC Quad City Chapter Number 50 has sought to achieve successful results for Rock Island and the surrounding areas in the cooperative spirit with other organizations. Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, Mayor of the City of Rock Island, do hereby recognize NAWIC Quad City Chapter Number 50 and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and support of women in construction, and do proudly proclaim the week of March 3rd through the 9th, 2019, as Women in the Construction Week. So thank you very much.
Next, you want to take a little photo op real quick?
Oh, perfect.
They're gonna look at you. Don't we look good on here? I think we're ready when you're ready. Oh, I miss this, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations, you guys.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Quad City Chapter Number 50, we thank the City of Rock Island for this proclamation for WIC Week of 2019. NAIC's mission is to enhance the success of women in the construction industry. We provide awareness of the opportunities available for women and to emphasize the growing role of women in the construction industry. It's also time for local chapters to give back to their communities. Chapter 50 does so during this year with its scholarship program and also by partnering with local agencies such as Humility of Mary, Dress for Success, Winnie's Place, and the Iowa Women Lead Change Conference. This year, we will be serving a meal at the Humility of Mary Shelter on Sunday, March 3rd. Thank you again for all your support.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number nine.
A special ordinance declaring 748-gallon refuse containers as surplus and allowing for disposal. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 10.
A special ordinance removing a one-way street for eastbound traffic on 25th Avenue between 9th and 11th Streets on school days between the hours of 7:15 a.m. and 8:15 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. and 3:30 p.m. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Hope we don't do this again and flip it around again. We did this, what, just before school started, I believe, and evidently, it didn't work. We don't need to be reviewing things like this every four, six months.
Thank you.
You say that, he says that because he's the only one voted against it, is that right? Or you might have supported it more.
I think I was with Virgil as well, and it was, yeah, well, you know, I can talk all I like. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 11.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 726 24th Street. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 12.
A special ordinance establishing one four-hour parking space in front of 1625 Second Avenue. Second reading.
Move to pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
A special ordinance establishing two passenger loading zones in downtown Rock Island.
Move to consider, suspend the rules, and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Five eyes, one nay. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2018 budget, recommending increasing the water fund by $112,237.11 and the wastewater fund by $56,610.31. Note, this item was postponed from the February 11th, 2019 council meeting.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment as recommended?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan. Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Claims. I'll read A through C. A. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $19,766 to Broadspire of Atlanta, Georgia for a worker's compensation claim. B. Report from the Information Technology Department regarding payment in the amount of $29,483.09 to Harris Governor of Chicago, Illinois, for the annual maintenance agreement for the governed business licenses, permits, and inspection software for the year from April 1st, 2019, through March 31st, 2020. And C. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $50,750 to Environmental Dynamics International of Columbia, Missouri, for the wastewater treatment plant eration diffuser replacement cleaning project for services provided during calendar year 2019 per the contract with Eration Works.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims A through C.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question on item B, or claim B. I just want to know whether that figure was an increase over the contract amount for the previous year. Do we have to pay more for it this year than last year?
Yes.
I knew the answer to that, but I wanted it to come from you.
It's a small increase every year that we see for our software maintenance.
Maybe if you wouldn't mind, next year, include how much more it's going to be, just for informational purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried. Now, I'll read D through F. D. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment
in the amount of $13,300, I'm sorry, $13,934.20 to McClary Excavating Company Incorporated of Bluegrass, Iowa, for an emergency sanitary manhole replacement at 2704 38th Street. E. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number two in the amount of $302,639.74 to Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, for the Third Avenue Water Main Extension at 24th Street Project for services provided from May 26, 2018, through December 1, 2018. Note, this item was postponed from the February 11th, 2019 council meeting.
Motion to.
Oh, I got one more. I'm sorry. F. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number 16 in the amount of $681,327 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois, for the water filtration facility project for services provided from December 21, 2018, through January 24, 2019. Note, this item was postponed from the February 11th, 2019 council meeting.
Motion to accept the reports and authorize the payments as recommended for claims items D through F.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Clarification, Mayor, for item D. It's not for a manhole cover. It was for the work, because I went by there and seen it. The workers worked around that particular site because a manhole cover doesn't cost $13,000. So, for clarification, so people know, okay?
Thank you.
We made the manhole covers at John Deere Foundry, so I know a little bit about that.
My local.
Due to the nature of my employment, I will be recusing myself from this vote, gentlemen. Shocking.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
Claims for the weeks of February 8th through February 14th in the amount of $752,880.13 and February 15th through February 21st in the amount of, excuse me, $466,333.32 and payroll for the weeks of January 28, 2019, through February 10, 2019, in the amount of $1,475,749.29.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
ACH payments for the month of January 2019 in the amount of $2388,906.06.
Move to approve the ACH payments.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Worried there for a minute. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Purchase card claims for the period of December 27, 2018, through January 28, 2019, in the amount of $72,746.30.
Motion to approve the purchase card claims.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the emergency purchase of a replacement engine for number 8898, 1999 International Rolloff Container Truck from Thompson Truck and Trailer of Davenport, Iowa, in the amount of $17,989.79.
Move to, go ahead.
Motion to approve the purchase as recommended?
Second.
Thank you. Move to second. Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to point out from the report that goes with this item that even though the purchase cost is over, almost $18,000, there's a core charge to be returned of over $4,000, resulting in the final cost of $13,302.
Thank you.
Assuming the core is good, which I hope it is.
I'll take that.
Maybe.
The expert opinion, right? That's right.
Yes. We are keeping 1999s rolling down the road, huh?
Yes, we have a higher priority areas that we want to replace in our fleet, and this isn't one of them. So we're looking to save money and apply that to our snow fleet in the following year.
Now, we've got our own mechanic here. He could, for the wages, he could go down and fix it. With no pay increase.
Yep.
Could you give us a rough estimate if we bought a brand-new vehicle?
I think it's $170,000 to $175,000.
Yeah. So, that's a great savings.
Yep.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the 2019 Brick Street Repair Program, recommending the bid be awarded to Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $76,123.70. Note, this item was postponed from the February 11th, 2019 council meeting.
You can make a motion?
Move to approve, move to approve the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. There was a number of addresses listed on the report, and I'm assuming that there'll be more because of the season that we're in and the weather and the brick street conditions, so what happens if we get a big one and it's not on here?
We can always change locations depending on severity. So those are just some areas identified last year and in years past. But we generally don't add too many because what's there in front of you is about what the money will provide as far as repairs go, so we couldn't add a whole lot.
Was surprised by a big dip in the road on 12th Street somewhere down around 21st Avenue in that general vicinity, just yesterday or the day before, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and we've actually done a lot of work on 12th Street south of 18th Avenue with this program in the past, but we're trying to focus on other areas as well.
I don't think this was, I don't remember this being there before. I think it just, maybe it just got worse. I don't know.
Okay.
I'll phone it in.
I'll take a look at that.
Or text it in.
You said 21st Avenue?
Around there.
Okay.
We still, we're still following what we included in our Brick Street Plan from 1980 or whenever the heck that was.
We are. These are still in the major focus areas. I forget how it's identified as far as A, B, C, or D, but yes, these are all in those areas.
Okay, and we're still allocating like 5% of our street fund for Brick Street? Is that?
I don't know the exact total offhand as far as percentages go, but this is the, we've always done in the area of $80,000 to $100,000 approximately for this program.
Yeah. Well, I live, I live on a Brick Street, so I appreciate this program. My street has not been repaired, but, you know.
Could you give us an estimate as far as how many miles of Brick Streets we still have in Rock Island?
Boy, I wish I would have had that question before I came because I don't have that.
Well, you can give it to me later.
Okay, I will do that.
But I know we have a lot.
We do.
Of Brick Streets, and they're terrible.
Yeah, and they're costly to repair.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Due to the aforementioned reason, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote as well.
I got brick underneath the concrete that's on my street. Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Five eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a memorandum of understanding with the Rock Island Housing Authority for the completion of environmental reviews.
To approve the terms of the MOU as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement subject to any minor city attorney modifications.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I'm not sure who would be the best person to ask, but can we just get some background, general information as to what this is, why we're doing it, what's going on? Let the public know what we're doing.
What we're trying to do is outline our responsibilities as a responsible entity. It's a title that we'll be taking. Whenever the Housing Authority does something, it has HUD, it has a 106 review, an environmental review attached to it, and we would be reviewing that and working on the documents. Well, the moment we touch that, sign it, we would take all responsibility at the federal level for the project. And this outlines what's going on, who's responsible for what. And in order for us to sign those documents, it lays out exactly what we need from the Housing Authority.
Sounds like a good plan.
Basically, a memorialization of what's already required, but that way it gives Chandler and his staff the ability to truthfully, I mean, to say, hey, they've complied with all these things, and now we can sign off on it, so it just sets a roadmap for that.
Roll call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spoggettis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six eyes, no nays. Motion carried.
22.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2019 budget, recommending increasing the General Fund 101 by $65,972.09 and the Community Economic Development Fund 207 by $509,749.36 and the MLK Community Center Operations Fund 211 by $3,650.67 and the Park and Recreation Fund 555 by $5,717.65 through a transfer from the Gaming Fund 223.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment as recommended?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Yes, it's my understanding that all of this money is coming from gaming.
Yes.
I thought it was, but I wanted to be sure.
So while you're up here, would you explain to the people who are watching why it is we're moving money back and forth?
Sure.
It's in the report. I read it, but I want you to explain it to other people. It's in the report, I'm, I read it, but I want you to explain it to other people.
Definitely, so every year, the, uh, use of gaming funds is approved by council, and when a project isn't complete, or, or, uh, sometimes projects don't start and end in the same year, um, part of our accounting processes is that we return all of the money that was budgeted to the gaming fund. Staff then go through the r- report of all of the projects that weren't completed to determine what still needs to be carried forward. So, not everything is carried forward to be rebudgeted in the next year, um, but in this case, these are the projects that do need to be carried forward, and I want to say about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars remained in the gaming fund, so projects that were budgeted, that, um, are considered complete and, um, came in under budget, and so the money that was returned at December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen to gaming will stay in the gaming fund to be used for, uh, when we're working on the two thousand twenty budget.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Hey, roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-three.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year two thousand nineteen budget, recommending increasing the Park and Recreation Fund five-five-five by five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-four.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from the Rock Island Academy for the vacation of public right-of-way of the Ninth Avenue cul-de-sac.
Move to approve the requ- oh, did I not let you finish?
Of course you did.
Extending west from the west property line of twelve-seventeenth Ninth Avenue.
Thank you guys for waiting. Move to approve the request for vacation as recommended and s- subject to inclusion of easement for all Mid-American Energy and City-Owned Utilities and referred to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark. Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-five.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the review of a two-lot minor final plat of the Frankie Corner First Edition subdivision located at twenty-six oh four and twenty-six oh eight Twenty-first Avenue.
Move to approve the final plat with variances as recommended, subject to obtaining all required signatures on subdivision plat certificates and conforming to requirements in the zoning and subdivision ordinances.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Just a quick question, just for historical purposes, is that building the former Wells Market, is that what it was called before? Does anybody know?
Yes.
That's what I'm remembering.
I am, too.
Down the street from the former Audubon School location, to the south, that is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of in a cul-de-sac-looking type of place there.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-six.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Michael Bartels for the removal of traffic signals at Seven- Seventeenth Street and Fifth Avenue and Eighteenth Street and Fourth Avenue, and replaced with stop signs.
Move to approve the request as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Let's turn them all into stop signs. Get rid of all the stoplights. One ways.
Easier said than done.
Yeah, we'll get there, we'll get there.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-seven.
Report from the city clerk regarding a Plaza Activity Event Application from the Smoking Dog for an outdoor tented event for the annual Gamma Alpha Beta Fraternity Buckethead fundraiser benefiting Camp Keesem on Saturday, March twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, from eleven AM to five PM, recommending approval of the permit fee waiver in the outdoor sale and consumption of alcohol.
Move to approve the event and request, subject to complying with all Plaza and Liquor License regulations, contacting the fire department for fire and safety considerations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, where is Camp Keesem?
Pardon?
Camp Keesem, I've never heard of it.
Camp Keesem is a national camp for children who are affected, or families that are affected by cancer. Augustana College has a local chapter, so they take the kids to a camp in Des Moines locally, and they participate in a national, uh, um, program, so it's for local kids who are affected, or families affected by cancer, run by Augie Kids.
Kyle's here from Smoking Dog, if anybody has, I mean, if you want to.
Who is?
Kyle from Smoking Dog.
From Smoking Dog.
Oh, okay, if he'd like to comment on it.
Sure. God, if you don't mind, it, sign it, we appreciate it, then, please, thank you.
Yes, this would be our third year holding the event fundraiser for Camp Kessam, and he described it very well, that it is a national organization, and we, uh, raise money for the local chapter. This will be the third year that we've hosted it in the downtown Plaza area.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, thanks, Kyle, appreciate your effort taking this on.
All right, thank you.
Well, I, I have one thing I just wanted to clarify, I did speak with the city clerk on the phone late this afternoon, but on the, uh, activity event permit page, it's, it's checked not-for-profit organization, and should that be corrected, or is that correct?
Well, that's how he, he completed the form, but he did pay the thirty-five-dollar not-for-profit application fee, as he always does.
So, I guess what I'm ultimately trying to determine is, are we waiving thirty-five-dollar permit fee or a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit fee for a for-profit organization?
Since the Smoking Dog is the host and sponsor, we're wa- waiving the two-hundred-and-fifty, even though he's doing it as a fundraiser.
Okay, so the box for, that should be checked would be profit organization, I, I assume then.
Right, that's just an error on his part.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I was confused about it a little bit.
Yeah.
For a nonprofit, but a profit is doing it for a nonprofit.
So, we're waiving two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar permit fee, if it, if it passes, I assume.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Aye.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-eight.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from Kavanaugh's Hilltop Tavern for an outdoor tented event with live music for the St. Patrick's Day Parade Weekend on Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, from three PM to eleven PM, and on Saturday, March sixth, two thou- sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, from noon until eleven-thirty PM at twelve-twenty-eight Thirtieth Street.
Move to approve the event and request, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations, contacting the fire department for fire and safety considerations, and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received as recommended.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Uh, what we, what's up with the fire department? We threw, we threw that in there, is that a change? Have we always done that?
When, whenever there's a tented event.
Thank you very much.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Six ice, no nays, motion carried.
Thank you, item twenty-nine, other business?
Mayor, I do have just a little bit, and it was on the last motion we just pa- approved. There has, at the, uh, Kavanaugh's Hilltop is a very active place, and I know there's a huge issue with the freedom of speech, because it's a neighborhood bar, but sometimes the music gets raunchy, uh, you know, and I, and I don't know what our legal ramifications are, I think the only complaints can be of noise, would be a, an authorized complaint. Uh, looking for a little help here, maybe, to talk to the people that are doing it, because we will have constituents that are disappointed with, uh, some of the more vulgar language out there and the music.
Yeah, I think that was a, a one-time deal with an outdoor band, maybe this is tented, if you go up there, you really can't hear much from the street, because the band is playing in the tent.
I, I pray so.
So, I mean, I've been, I've been up there before, and there's usually so many people blocking the sound that, uh, I, I don't think there'll be a, an issue here, if, if we get a complaint, we could address it at the time, but I'm only aware of that one gentleman that spoke that, and I think that was just a, sort of a unique band.
Okay. I hope.
And city attorney may want to weigh in on your question.
We have, um, you can put in place, um, for, um, a public event, time, place, and manner restrictions that are, um, uh, reasonable, you have a hard time, uh, with content-based restrictions, whenever you start trying to restrict content, it can become a, kind of a sticky wicket, I guess. But, um, I think certainly if someone were to express that to, uh, the owners, I would believe that they have enough outdoor events and are, I think they're pretty responsible in being responsive to that, that might help.
Okay, good.
Does anyone have any thoughts, comments for the good?
Cause I got a couple, real quick, try to make them quick, but one I learned about today a little more in detail, but I think it's been in the press here lately about the backpack, uh, program. Um, they, uh, they, it was started by a guy, Tim Ott, um, works right now for the Rock Island County, uh, Sheriff's Department, but it's called Christian Care Package, or pack, and maybe some of you have seen it on the news or whatever, but I guess I did, it's worth to me, or at least, uh, throwing out there, making sure everybody's aware of it anywhere else, but, uh, where he buys, or a, a church, or whatever buys backpacks, and they fill the backpack full of, uh, items that are, uh, make, helpful for the homeless, whether it be a blanket, hot, uh, gloves, um, uh, water, some, small things to eat, et cetera. And, uh, he is, I guess I, I bring this up, he, he's, this thing's really grown and taken off, and I bring it up because the, the Rock Island Fire Department and Police Department have gotten involved with this, along with the Moline, I think East Moline, and now Davenport too, but where actually, they take them, these backpacks, to the Police Department, and they put him, uh, at least one in each squad car, and maybe you guys know about this more than I do, but they put one in each squad car, if an officer comes across, uh, an individual that, uh, looks homeless or needing something, they give him the backpack. In there, it also, uh, uh, gives him, uh, some, a letter, or, and that sort of thing's explaining, other places they can go get help if they wished, Christian Care, or wherever it is, uh, the food pantries, et cetera, but it also tells them that they can get the backpack refilled, and what they do is they go to the fire department, and they're stocked with rubber-made containers full of products to restock it. And so they can feel, and there's a sign outside the po- of the fire station, you know, saying that this is the place you can get it refilled, um, and get them refilled, and, and so they can, uh, keep that going, and then they'll change it in the summer months, they'll change what's in the backpack, uh, to be, uh, apropos of that, but a lot of churches, there's been three or four churches in Rock Island, uh, Sacred Heart, uh, here, um, St. Pious, uh, and there's one in Myland, I believe, St. Ambrose, I think, in Myland, uh, here locally, right here, have been involved, uh, in helping pack these things, and, but I thought it was really a great idea, they, they've really grown in popularity, they've given out a, a good number of them, I can't speak how many our department's given out, um, and they've had some repeats, I don't know, but, um, so I just wanted, I guess it really was a, a great program that seemed to take off, and, and so there was, shows there was a need, uh, to help those individuals that, you know, is less invasive for those, uh, also, they, they don't have to be embarrassed about what they're doing, um, and, uh.
Is there a place, uh, citizens can go to make a donation?
They can, they, I checked that out, they, if you talk to Barb, ask for Barb at St. Pious Church in Rock Island, uh, you can make a donation there and/or let her know, uh, that, um, you want to volunteer help, but Barb at St. Pious Church, uh, they'll take the dona- donations and everything else, um, and, and the help, but it's so new that they really haven't got a lot of those forman- formal situations, like you have a separate checking account for, so, you know, where to donate it, or five oh one C three, or anything else, it's just so new, it started November of last year, and it's just gone over like wildfire that they working on keeping up, but, um, so it, it's just, it's, to me, it hit right on, uh, filling a need, and I thought, brought that forth, uh, to let people know. One other thing, just let somebody know, a few people know that was some, one of the things I do or have done, is I did go to Washington DC a couple of weeks ago, uh, the USDA has, uh, has taken a look at moving two of their, uh, uh, divisions, uh, to more in the, in the, the Corn Belt area, where they control and dictate what goes on and learn, um, I can't remember the acronyms of the two divisions, this federal government works with all these acronyms, but, uh, it's upwards of five hundred, uh, people, and so myself and Bob Gallagher, Bettendorf Mayor, along with some people from, uh, John, one from John Deere, uh, and Quad City First, uh, went out to Washington DC to politic our, uh, our legislators, and, and free, trying to push for this. There was a hundred and thirty-six cities are trying to get these two divisions, um, so it's competition, they're supposed to narrow it down to nine or ten here any day, um, they want to move some of these, I'll say, these people divisions by September of this year, so they need it to be, uh, building ready, uh, ready building, uh, to move into. The Rock Island Arsenal, uh, is, they've got building space available, lots of it, ready to move in with desks and everything, they could literally move in tomorrow, um, so we feel that we will make the shortcut, uh, of a small list, and, uh, and be able to have, tell a good story about attracting these, uh, these departments, and a good boost